We will now call a common council meeting of January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Here.
Alderman Lorick is excused. Alderman Dukniak.
Here.
Marshall.
Gail.
And Alderman Guzekowski is excused.
Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Mr. Johnson, would you start us off, please?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And that'll bring us to the approval of minutes of December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two. If everybody take a few moments and review them. When you're satisfied, there's no discussion, omissions, or corrections. Motion, please.
Marshall moves.
Kirkowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman Dukniak.
Aye.
Marshall. Aye. Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
We will start the evening with some recognitions and resolutions thereof. The first one is a resolution of the commendation to Brian J. Anderson, a retiring firefighter here in the city of Oak Creek. Kathryn, would you please read that proclamation?
Certainly. Resolution of commendation to Brian J. Anderson. Whereas Brian J. Anderson was appointed a firefighter on December twenty-seventh, two thousand, and whereas Brian J. Anderson retired from his position as firefighter effective December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two, after twenty-one years and eleven months of dedicated full-time service to the City of Oak Creek Fire Department. And whereas during his years of service, Brian J. Anderson has performed his duties admirably, looking out for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Oak Creek. And whereas Brian J. Anderson responded to many alarms utilizing his skills in firefighting and rescue with dedication and without hesitation. And whereas Brian J. Anderson has been an emergency medical technician in the state of Wisconsin and has cared for thousands of citizens who were sick or injured, always delivering caring and skilled emergency care to them. And whereas Brian J. Anderson served as an acting officer, providing supervision and leadership to his crews in the station and on emergency calls. And whereas Brian J. Anderson served as a member of the department's maintenance program, lending his expertise in the repair and maintenance of department equipment. And whereas Brian J. Anderson conducted many tours and participated in fire prevention activities for the children of Oak Creek during his career. And whereas Brian J. Anderson worked in the Inspection Bureau as fire inspector, serving over three years, where his dedicated work helped keep businesses, its occupants, and other contacts safe from fire. And now therefore be it resolved that the city's best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Brian J. Anderson and his family in his retirement year. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Brian J. Anderson. Passed and adopted the seventeenth day of January, two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you, Kathryn.
You're welcome.
At this time, I'll invite Chief Kresikoff, if he'd like to, or...
Good evening, council. Probably about a month ago, you had the opportunity to hear some of Brian's background during a closed session. Maybe to wrap up with his resolution and retirement tonight, you know, Brian certainly did serve at multiple levels in our organization. Firefighter, acting officer, and later in his career, fire inspector. He served very well in each of those roles. Many contributions were made to our organization and without a doubt to the community as a whole. Noting the end of his career and his service in the fire inspector role, he was the face of our organization for the commercial and business in the city of Oak Creek. He excelled at that because of his experience as a firefighter and the skills he had learned as a firefighter. Very collaborative in his efforts to work with the businesses, generated much support for the fire department as well as fire prevention programming. Just want to wish Brian and his family a happy retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Council members, anyone got any words?
Retirement ceremony was beautiful. Sorry, I really enjoyed those.
Cam?
I was fortunate enough, too, to also be able to make Brian's retirement ceremony. Brian had a varied, varied career, and in the end, he ended up being our fire inspector. And what he really lent to us in his last few years was his expertise all the way around and his dedication as a firefighter, moving the city forward. Left a great example for what's to come in that department. Really set the bar pretty high. It was evident how Brian was respected by the rest of the crew and how dedicated he was as a firefighter. I'm sure if he had it his way, he would have served a little bit more, but fortunately, it didn't play out that way at the end of his career. On behalf of myself, citizens of Oak Creek, we want to thank you for your service and wish you a long and happy retirement.
With that, motion, please.
Bill, move to approve Resolution one, two, three.
Marshall, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Item five is consideration of a resolution of appreciation to Michael R. Bolander, retiring police captain. Kathryn? It's gonna be a long one.
Resolution of appreciation to Michael R. Bolander. Whereas Michael R. Bolander began his employment with the city of Oak Creek on April eighth, nineteen ninety-one, is a full-time police officer. And whereas during his thirty-one years and nine months of service, Michael R. Bolander has been an integral part of the police department, serving as a patrol officer early in his career, then rising through the ranks as sergeant, lieutenant, and captain of operation. And whereas Michael R. Bolander has been a valuable employee during his years of dedicated service with the Oak Creek Police Department, always striving to enhance the quality of life for the citizens of the city, and has been a model teammate for all those he has worked with and those under his command, being well-known for his work ethic, his dedication to the department, and his leadership. And whereas Michael R. Bolander received twenty combined departmental acknowledgements and awards. Most notably are the Medal of Valor for rescuing occupants of a burning building, some of whom had to be carried out, Life Saving Award for saving the life of a suicidal subject on the I-94 overpass at Ryan Road, Award of Excellence for his response to the Sikh temple on August fifth, two thousand and twelve, and the Career Achievement Award. And whereas Michael R. Bolander served with honor, passion, and dedication on several subunits of the Oak Creek Police Department: Training Unit, Emergency Response Unit, Honor Guard, Career Survival Unit, Awards Committee, Recruitment Team, Homeland Security Unit, and K-9 Agitator. Through Michael R. Bolander's leadership and dedication, the Oak Creek Police Department is more capable and ready to serve the citizens of Oak Creek. And whereas Michael R. Bolander was a founding member of the Emergency Response Unit in nineteen ninety-two, where he served until two thousand and seven. During that time, Michael R. Bolander served as team leader for ten years, as well as receiving thirteen team awards and achieving the rank of Master Operator. From two thousand and seven until his retirement, he served as a tactical commander overseeing the Emergency Response Unit. And whereas Michael R. Bolander began researching and creating the Training Unit in nineteen ninety-two, where he remained active for thirty years until he retired. During this time, he attained twenty-six instructor certifications, some of which were even attained on his own time. He worked countless hours as a trainer, supervisor, and manager of the Training Unit to ensure its success and that everyone was properly prepared to handle anything they encountered on patrol. Michael R. Bolander provided instruction to many law enforcement officers and citizens alike. Furthermore, he has been a role model and mentor for all of the trainers. And whereas during Michael R. Bolander's career with the Oak Creek Police Department, he attended and graduated from the School of Police Staff and Command through Northwestern University in nineteen ninety-eight. Attended and graduated from Marquette University with a master's in public service, specializing in criminal justice administration, in two thousand and eleven. Michael R. Bolander has also attained many other training and law enforcement certificates utilizing the knowledge and training he received throughout his career and willingly shared it with his members of the Oak Creek Police Department. And whereas Michael R. Bolander is retiring from the Oak Creek Police Department after completing thirty-one years and nine months of full-time service to the city of Oak Creek. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and common council of the city of Oak Creek for and on behalf of the citizens of the city of Oak Creek that sincere gratitude and appreciation be extended to Michael R. Bolander for his years of professional, dedicated, and faithful service to the city of Oak Creek and the police department. And that the best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Michael R. Bolander and his family for future years. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Michael R. Bolander, passed and adopted the seventeenth day of January, two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you, Kathryn. This time, I'll ask Chief Stecker if he'd like to come up.
Good evening, council. I tried boiling it down as much as I could. We're talking about somebody that was incremental in part of our integral process to get everything transformative through those years. And Mike just continued, would finish a project and step onto the next project to make sure that we're better every single year. He was never satisfied with being done or what was average or okay. And I think that really set the tone for the police department over the last thirty-two years. And it's also set the tone for many of us moving forward here. So to try and rehash everything that Mike's gone through is difficult at best. It's definitely something that we're going to miss. You have thirty-two years of knowledge, walk out the door, and experience. But to Mike's benefit, one of the big things that he was involved with was succession planning as well. So he's made sure that all of us are prepared here at the police department to make sure that the city is ready for everything that comes in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Council members, Steve?
What more can you say, really? I chuckle in the fact that you had to change the font to get everything on one page, which was pretty remarkable. And I just know that when I came to Captain Bolander with some requests for some help with regards to security for our church, you, you know, he didn't hesitate to throw out suggestions and offer advice. So, you know, that was, it's always stuck in the back of my mind. And some of the stuff we implemented, which was really great.
Steve?
I was fortunate enough to go to Captain Bolander's retirement ceremony as well, and it was quite a ceremony. You could see the respect that came out of the, not only Oak Creek Police Department, but other departments throughout the city as well as the county and other agencies as well. He definitely stood out as an individual. An old saying, we meet people every day, but some people just seem to change everything and affect everything. He was one of those individuals. I think the chief said it best. It's hard to sum up his dedication and faithfulness to the citizens of Oak Creek in the city. So he will be missed, but again, as efficient as he was, he made sure we're in good hands. I'm gonna wish him and his family just a long and happy retirement. Many thanks from not only myself, but citizens of Oak Creek and the council as well. Well done.
Motion?
Bill, approve Resolution one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Marshall, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
And item six is consideration of a resolution of appreciation to Randall A. Nitter, retiring police lieutenant. Kathryn?
Certainly. Resolution of appreciation to Randall A. Nitter. Whereas Randall A. Nitter began his employment with the city of Oak Creek on May twenty-third, nineteen ninety-four, is a full-time police officer. And whereas during his twenty-eight years and seven months of service, Randall A. Nitter has been an integral part of the police department, serving as a police officer early in his career, rising to the rank of sergeant on February nineteenth, two thousand and seven, and then to the rank of lieutenant on February twenty-eighth, two thousand and eleven. And whereas Randall A. Nitter has been a valuable employee during his years of dedicated service with the Oak Creek Police Department, always striving to enhance the quality of life for the citizens of the city and has been a model teammate and supervisor for those he has worked with, being well-known for his work ethic, his dedication to the department, and his leadership. And whereas Randall A. Nitter received nineteen combined departmental acknowledgements and awards, most notably are the Exemplary Officer Award in two thousand and five for his continued dedication and loyalty to the law enforcement profession, a Life Saving Award in two thousand and twenty for saving a citizen's life by providing life-saving CPR, and the Award of Excellence in two thousand and twenty-three for his efforts and leadership over his fifteen years as a supervisor. And whereas Randall A. Nitter served and led with honor, passion, and dedication on several subunits of the Oak Creek Police Department: K-9 Unit Supervisor, Field Training Officer, and Field Training Office Supervisor, Incident Command System Coordinator, Evidence Technician, and Homeland Security Unit Supervisor. Through Randall A. Nitter's tenacity, leadership, and dedication, the Oak Creek Police Department is more prepared, capable, and ready to serve the citizens of Oak Creek. And whereas Randall A. Nitter is retiring from the Oak Creek Police Department after completing twenty-eight years and seven months of full-time service to the city of Oak Creek. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and common council of the city of Oak Creek for and behalf of the citizens of the city of Oak Creek that sincere gratitude and appreciation be extended to Randall A. Nitter for his years of professional, dedicated, and faithful service to the city of Oak Creek and the police department. And that the best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Randall A. Nitter and his family for future years. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Randall A. Nitter, passed and adopted the seventeenth day of January, two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you, Kathryn. And once again, I'll invite Chief Stecker up.
Good evening again. Randy's experience and knowledge, not as out in the public as much as Captain Bolander's was. Randy was kind of the opposite. He was a very silent leader and did so by being involved with everyone else. So just two different types of leadership styles, but sometimes you need those two different types of leadership styles. You need those different contrasting ways to go through and have people understand how to be led and how to grow. So Randy's had a huge impact, especially when it comes to our incident command structure and making sure that we're ready for the big incidents that come through and making sure that we're continually getting trained and upgraded with our training. And Randy was one of the big ones who, every single person that came through, he was in charge of our field training officer program as well. So every new officer for the last ten years, Randy oversaw them, made sure that they were prepared for everything that they were gonna see and be a well-adjusted officer moving forward. So Randy's experience coupled with Captain Bolander's is a tough one to deal with when we have sixty years of experience and knowledge walking out the door. But again, both of them very dedicated to making sure that we're ready for the future.
Great. Thank you, chief. Comments?
No, I can't add much to the chief. He is dead on. I've dealt with Randy in many different things. And again, he was, he was the quiet organizing factor at the police station, communicating out to the citizens. Definitely a different style police officer, but again, a great compliment to the retirement of Captain Bolander. They served a long time together and they complemented each other very well. Just to add to the chief, Randy was instrumental in this department growth and the training of the officers you now see on the road. And that experience, again, was translated into training and the dedication he had for the city. So just want to again wish Randy, his family, a long, happy retirement on behalf of myself, common council, and the citizens of Oak Creek.
Motion, please.
Bill, move to approve Resolution one, two, three, seven, six, seven, two, three.
Marshall, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
And item seven is consideration of a resolution of commendation to Thomas C. Johnson, retiring Assistant Fire Chief of Operation and Training. Kathryn?
Resolution of commendation to Thomas C. Johnson. Whereas Thomas C. Johnson was appointed a firefighter on February thirteenth, nineteen ninety-five, promoted to lieutenant on July first, two thousand and two, promoted to battalion chief on February first, twenty-ten, and promoted to Assistant Chief of Operations and Training on January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty. And whereas Thomas C. Johnson retired from his position as Assistant Chief of Operations and Training effective January sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, after twenty-seven years and ten months of dedicated full-time service to the city of Oak Creek Fire Department. And whereas during his years of service, Thomas C. Johnson has performed his duties admirably, looking out for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Oak Creek. And whereas Thomas C. Johnson responded to many major alarms utilizing his skills in firefighting, rescue, and incident command with dedication and without hesitation. And whereas Thomas C. Johnson served as a founding member of the department's paramedic program and has cared for thousands of citizens who were sick or injured, always delivering caring and skilled emergency care to them. And whereas Thomas C. Johnson was a founding member of the department's Tactical Emergency Medical Service Team and provided medical support to police officers, citizens, victims, and/or suspects who were injured. And whereas Thomas C. Johnson managed the department's emergency response and communication programs and ensured that these programs addressed the needs of our community. Whereas Thomas C. Johnson managed the department's training program, always striving to prepare firefighters to perform at the highest level during incident responses. And whereas Thomas C. Johnson exhibited a constant motivation for the department to provide high-quality services, always striving to continuously improve operations. And now therefore be it resolved that the city's best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Thomas C. Johnson and his family in his retirement years. Be it further resolved that his resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Thomas C. Johnson, passed and adopted the seventeenth day of January, two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you, Kathryn. And we will invite Chief Kresikoff.
Counsel, so I will get my kick at Tom on February second. There's so much more depth to this than perhaps I can give in a minute or two. So each of those positions listed for Tom that he served at, he just didn't serve in that position. He embraced them. He made them his own, exuding passion and support for the community. Really, each of those positions set him up for what came later, which was the Assistant Chief of Operations and Training. What I do a terrible job of is telling you, the council, the thousand things that go into the preparation for us to go on calls. You know the number of calls we go on. You know what we respond to. There's a thousand things that prepare our firefighters and our lieutenants to perform excellence in the field. That's Tom. Tom embraced that position because of his passion at each of his rank positions. He took that to the assistant chief position and made us a better department because of it. So just want to wish Tom and his wife a happy retirement, and we'll get to more on February second. Thank you.
Before I go to the council, Tom, would you like to come to the podium? Oh, hang on. Gotta be on the mic. Minutes.
Minutes. Just a great amount of gratitude, appreciation for the job. I knew it'd be tough. It was a rocky road to get to this point of retirement. Some of you know my wife's medical history and what we went through. Refocused me as to the important things in life. Even though the job was always kind of my number one thing, she's taken that front seat and always should have. So, sorry for the emotion, but it means a lot to me. And I just really appreciate everything that the city's done for me, the department has done for me, and you guys personally. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Council members? Steve?
Well, as he walks away. No, 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 no. Wait, do you remember, do you remember where we met? Yeah, where was that? Little League. And your boys were umpires, and I would umpire with them, and you would be there. So it just, and we've, through these years, you know, we just run into each other and we just say hi. And it always takes me back to the Little League complex. So just want to let you know that since my retirement, I've like gone knee-deep in the umpiring, so you're welcome to join me.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay.
I appreciate it. Honestly, God, I mean, I love doing that also and being part of the community. And I've been in this community since nineteen seventy-eight, so, you know, I've grown up here, I've lived here, and contributed back to the community, and it's provided for me, too. No more grateful than what I am. Thank you.
Tom, just on behalf of myself, I've known you for a number of years, and you've always been a consummate professional. And more importantly, you've been a great steward of the city and a family man. You know, it shows in the emotion. Never be ashamed of it, because what you are and that passion also went out to the citizens of Oak Creek. That compassion in everything you did. You did professionally. You were just a great ambassador for the city. You've said it every single level. You will be missed, but your contributions will not be forgotten. So I just want to thank you, our family, for all the sacrifices, things you've done for this city. Wish you a long and happy retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Motion, please.
Marshall moves to adopt Resolution one, two, three, seven, seven, dash, zero, one, one, seven, two, three, a resolution of commendation to Thomas C. Johnson, retiring Assistant Fire Chief of Operations and Training.
Kirkowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman Dukniak.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
And item eight is consideration of a resolution of commendation to Philip Biermeister, retiring environmental design engineer. Kathryn?
Resolution of commendation to Philip Biermeister. Am I saying that correctly, Doug? Thank you. Whereas Philip Biermeister has began his employment with the city of Oak Creek on April first, nineteen ninety-six, as an environmental design engineer. Whereas Phil has also served as interim construction coordinator and design engineer in nineteen ninety-nine. And whereas Phil served on the ad hoc committee for the creation of the city's storm water master plan and storm water management ordinance, integral to the city's ability to control the impacts of storm water runoff. And whereas Phil has been a valuable employee during his years of dedicated service with the city of Oak Creek, positioning the city to become a regional leader in storm water and flood plain management, enhancing the quality of life within the Oak Creek community well into the future. And whereas on January sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, Phil retired from his position as environmental design engineer after serving twenty-six years, nine months with the city of Oak Creek, allowing him more time to travel, fish, homebrew, and spend time with his wife, children, and many friends. And whereas Phil has expressed his sincere appreciation for the opportunity to work with the people of Oak Creek and will miss the daily interactions with staff and elected officials. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and common council of the city of Oak Creek that for and on behalf of the citizens of Oak Creek, sincere gratitude and appreciation be extended to Philip Biermeister for his twenty-six years, nine months of dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek. And that the best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Philip Biermeister and his family in his retirement years. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the meeting and the city clerk be and is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Philip Biermeister, passed and adopted the seventeenth day of January, two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you, Kathryn. Before we go to council, Matt, Doug, any comments on Phil?
Sure. Matt Sullivan, city engineer. I had the privilege of working with Phil for seventeen years, end of his career. As everyone, I don't know if everyone knows Phil. He kind of worked behind the scenes. He was, you know, very intelligent and kind. And he did work with and kind of foster myself and our assistant city engineer through the process in the last five to ten years. So I have a lot of appreciation and respect for Phil, not only working internally but externally. He created some great relationships with other agencies, not only the county, state, but MMSDs, SWR-PAC, and a number of other. It actually has helped our department and the city kind of transform itself in the storm water management area. So, I mean, it's a great pleasure working with him, and he's gonna be truly missed the next couple more years until we can get our feet back under us and align ourselves a little bit better as we forward.
Thank you, Matt. Doug?
So if I did my math correctly, and I may not have, this evening, it's over a hundred and twenty-five years. Pretty impressive. And with Phil especially, I've grown to appreciate the history that he retains and brings to every situation that he dealt with and finding solutions. And I think that's probably was a common trait in a lot of the folks that you've seen kind of move on through retirement. But I mean, with Phil especially, I mean, I think he, I think we were very modest, I mean, and he was one of the key people, and that's even being modest there, he almost single-family, single-handedly, sorry, brought the city storm water management into what it is today. Very well-respected organization, one who seeks solutions, very innovative. So, you know, I'll miss chatting with Phil, being one of the few people that knew the old stories. He liked to share them, but just very thankful that we had the opportunity to work together and wish him the best.
Thank you, Doug. Counsel? I'm just going to add on a, Matt and Doug summed it up very well, but Phil was very well-respected. I serve on the MMSD board and whenever his name comes up, it is highly respected throughout the life. Phil was that guy behind the scenes and storm water has been remarkably better. And right here at Drexel Town Square, his, nobody really knows this, but his work is evident in the preserve. He helped lay out those plans to handle the storm water here and not only just handle the storm water, but make it a community better as well. Innovative ideas to help use green credits to help. Stuff around, so Phil's definitely going to be missed. We're in far better shape for him. I want to wish Phil and his family, once again, a very long, happy, healthy retirement. And on behalf of the city, myself, and the common council, congratulations to Phil. Motion, please. Roll call. Roll call.
Elderwoman Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Just want to make one comment on all those resolutions. Doug pointed it out, over a hundred and twenty-five years worth of experience going out here, very dedicated people. You can see the longevity and the passion that goes on. I insist that these get read, these people get some recognition, some time at the council, regardless of how long it takes, because they gave us all the time in the world and the benefit of this. Thank Catherine. Years passed, we didn't always do that, felt that it should be recognized. Okay, with that said, we're going to move on to nine, and that is our public hearing, our first and only public hearing of the night. And that is a consideration of a request by F Street OCLV LLC for the amendments to the existing traditional neighborhood development plan, unit development for Lake Shore Commons affecting properties at ninety-one sixteen and ninety-three hundred South Fifth Avenue. Catherine, would you please read that into record?
Certainly, public hearing number one is to consider a request submitted by F Street OCLV LLC for amendments to the existing traditional neighborhood development planned unit development for Lake Shore Commons affecting the properties at nine-one-one-six and nine-three-zero-zero South Fifth Avenue and four-zero-zero-five East Lake Vista Parkway. Applicant is F Street OCLV LLC, property owner F Street OCLV LLC and Edison M. Berkey Family Trust. Legal description, legal description of the PUD, the, their follows, date of notice, December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Doug?
Thank you, Catherine, my name is Doug Seymour, I am the Director of Community Development and this is a public hearing on a request to amend the planning and development for the Lake Shore Commons Traditional Neighborhood Development. Addresses were previously read into the record. The Lake Shore Commons PUD was approved initially approved by the council in October of two thousand twenty-one. And during the process of implementing implementing that plan, a very detailed plan, a very complex plan, there were a few things that we learned, we being the developer in the city, as a partnership about what we got right with the PUD and what maybe needed some adjustment with the PUD. And working with the property owners and with the developers as we are moving forward through the process of construction and now to occupancy of some of those buildings, there are a few things that we've, that were needed to be taken a look at. And really that primarily boils down into two, two issues. And the first one you see before you is the general development plan. And the general development plan is kind of the regulating document and plan that shows the general location of buildings, the types of buildings, open spaces, roads, things of that nature. And, and everything that's developed subsequent to that has to be in conformance with that general development plan. So as the market has slightly changed for the different typologies of units within the PUD, the developers have requested a change to the general development plan that would change the unit types along the northwest corner in phase one. The previous plan, the adopted plan right now, shows that as being a series of two- and three-unit buildings. And as the developers have gained some real-world marketing experience with that, the demand for the townhouse units has been substantial and they are proposing that townhomes now be put in the place of those two- and three-unit buildings. Second requested change is in the southern portion along Breakwater Drive where it intersects with Lake Vista Boulevard. You may recall that there were two buildings there, that is being replaced by one larger building and that's, you know, in response to a number of things, it allows for a little bit less infrastructure and it saves on some construction costs. And that, you know, that, as with every construction project in southeast Wisconsin over the past years, has been very impactful. So that really is the change to the general development plan and the document itself has just a lot of exhibits that need to be changed as well to reflect this new general development plan. The second major issue, not an issue, but the change was being requested with respect to some of the setbacks. Yeah, you'll note that the setbacks, front setbacks, side setbacks, have always been pretty small compared to some of the traditional suburban setbacks that you see elsewhere in some of our more common subdivisions. That was by design and even when doing that, when implementing that, it became something of a concern to the developers that maybe the setbacks, even though they were ten feet in front, for example, maybe it didn't allow them to do some of the things they wanted to do with some of the front porches, with some of the stairs, with some of the planters. So they, just in attempt to clarify and make, you know, make it easier moving forward, they have requested a change to ten, from ten feet to five feet for the front setbacks and that is inclusive of stairs, porches, planters, foundations, and buildings, so it just makes it easier. Staff knows exactly, you know, where, you know, there's five feet and then there's everything else. Whereas, you know, is a planter part of the setback, is a porch part of the setback, this cleans that up. It also cleans up an issue, whereas we had shown some, some side setbacks between three and eight feet, three and five feet, really the main thing for staff and for clarity of the building permits was we need to see a minimum of eight feet between buildings. So even though you'll see a three-to-five-foot setback, every building will be at least eight feet from another building. And those were the major two, again, some of the exhibits were also amended to kind of reflect those changes. But those were impetus for someone's request. That being said, this is a public hearing, would request that anyone who has any questions or comments regarding the proposed amendments to the Lake Shore Commons Traditional Neighborhood Plan and Development, please approach the microphone, give your name, address, and proceed to address your questions and or comments. The common council, this public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug, this will be the first call. Name and address, please, and you can pull the mic down.
Margaret Gossenuwer, ninety-three twenty-five South Eighth Avenue, Oak Creek. I'm questioning, my questions come from the articles in the paper and according to this December seventh article, it says there's going to be seven hundred units. Seven hundred housing units, it says, is that still correct?
Oh, there's a range that's allowable within the PUD and I think that's the upper range.
Okay, seven hundred units means what, fourteen hundred cars? Yeah.
I mean, there's, the parking standards for this are one-point-four spaces per unit, which is very, it's consistent with what was adopted as part of Drexel Town Square.
And that's all going to fit.
One-point-four spaces per unit, yes, and all the plans have reflected that percentage, that ratio.
Are there retention ponds there?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought they were. Okay, a boulevard, I don't see a boulevard.
Oh, that's the name of Lake Vista Boulevard, the, they're kind of the ring road that goes along and parks. On the southern end, that's called Lake Vista Boulevard.
Okay, there was a household on Lake Vista Boulevard in the paper, I think it was either two weeks ago. And I don't see a boulevard, it's, and the sign doesn't say boulevard on the Lake Vista street sign.
It may not, I mean, that's some, those are, there's a million little things that we find out during the course of this that need to be addressed, but I think that with respect to, I mean, that really hasn't changed from the original plan at all. I'd be curious to see if you had any questions or comments regarding the proposed changes.
Is there going to be more space on the road?
More space on the road.
I mean, a boulevard is a broad thing, usually with a middle?
It's the, it's the name, it's a suffix that was given to the name of the road. I mean, and you're right, I mean, I can give you examples of, of some grand boulevards, I can give you some examples of boulevards which are, you know, the only thing about it that's a boulevard is the street name. So it's, it does not denote any requirement for any particular right-of-way width or cross-section, it was just the name of the street.
Okay, so what about the theater, is that a public or private or what? Does it's going to have a swimming pool, a theater, and a fitness place?
Oh, those are all amenities that would be for the residents of that development.
Okay, the theater is not going to be anything other than for the people who live in that?
I can't speak to the private amenities, but that's, that would be my impression.
Seems like a very tight place, like ten pounds and a five-pound bag. But it will be what it is, thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. This will be the second call, anybody wishing to speak. Third and final call, anybody wishing to speak. We will now close the public hearing and go on to item ten, consideration of an ordinance amending the conditions and restrictions in ordinance thirty fifteen for the traditional neighborhood development planned unit development on portions of the property at ninety-one sixteen South Fifth Avenue and ninety-three hundred South Fifth Avenue and forty-oh-five East Lake Vista Parkway.
Marshal, any questions?
Any discussion? Steve?
Doug, I read in the minutes from one of the plan commission meetings, maybe I'm missing the outcome, but what was the outcome with regards to the discussion on the twenty-foot wide alleys meeting code versus the proposed sixteen feet? Are you, is it going to be twenty feet?
For the most part, wherever there's a, certainly any area that's public has to meet the certain standards. I think there's one private alley that may not meet that, but it, that in conjunction and connection with the aprons adjacent to that will provide the sufficient room for fire department apparatus. Matt, does that sound correct?
Okay, thank you. Nothing more. Ann?
Yeah, I think there's, for the verbiage, that's a possibility, but for the approved grading plans for all the utilities that are already in there, and in many cases, the foundations, that's, I mean, the building sites and the pads are kind of where the building pads and sites were. It's just a matter of as they were building them, you know, with the porches and the planters and these things already started sticking further. The grading plan, certainly for the first phase establishes where those are. It would have to come, if they would want to move them further, closer than five feet that have come back. If they wanted to move them within, and keeping everything outside of that five-foot setback, they would not. Well, it was our intention to just be clear with them and potential buyers that this is the line that you do not cross with respect, with any of your pertinences to that building. You know, I don't know that that's, that has ever been an issue because they've always really had a grading plan which established the location of those building sites and those building pads and they're, for the most part, they're pretty uniform. So I don't know that there'd be a reason to do that, but I understand that there's the potential to do that if they so chose.
Well, yeah, I'll just kind of, from what I remember at planning, part of, no, part of what drove this really was the grades on some of the buildings, when the buildings sat where they did, they were elevated and when the rise of the steps came, the steps stuck in. Or have you, so they gave them that flexibility. I don't think.
I don't want to overthink it, but I don't want, I don't want the side bug being.
No, it wasn't, you know, put the building right on the face of it, to have that separation and the plan.
Yeah, I think a lot of this, when you, when you dig into the details of their models that they have, that they're presenting to the public for sale, it was more to deal with the porch, porches in, you know, coming within that ten feet. A lot of the models they had, the porches stuck out two, three feet, the planters did, and like Doug had included, there's some major elevation change in some of the areas, so as their stairs were, they were approaching in that ten feet. So this kind of addressed that versus having to go back and forth like we were for the past two, three months, dealing with these differences, this is how we were addressing it. I guess as we're looking through it, I don't think the feel that they want, if they were to encroach within that ten feet with the foundations, would look, provide that look that they're trying to get, that continuity of that feel, it would just, it would ruin it, so. Yeah, there's, I mean, there's, there's some issues, if you go out there right now, there's one out there where the stairs, actually, we have worked with the developer to have the stairs aligned a different way, but they still have to get within that five-to-ten-foot area just to make it work on the elevation part.
What else? Guys? Okay, seeing no more discussion, motion on ten.
Marshal moves to adopt ordinance number three-oh-six-three, amending the continued conditions and restrictions in ordinance thirty fifteen for the traditional neighborhood development planned unit development, TND PUD on portions of the property at nine-one-one-six South Fifth Avenue, nine-three-zero-zero South Fifth Avenue, and four-zero-zero-five East Lake Parkway.
Go second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail. Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Item eleven is under community development and it's consideration of a resolution approving a certified survey map submitted by Fifth Property LLC in the City of Oak Creek for the property at forty-three-oh-one East Depot Road. Doug?
Thanks, these next two items are, deal with certified survey maps that are being done in partnership with both the city and the private. uh, in partnership with both the city and the private landowners. And these certified survey maps are being done in order to create the parcels which are necessary for the city to complete the revetment work project that's being done as part of the North Plough. And ultimately to provide the, the area along the shoreline that will be developed into the, the park, the North Plough Park, as we're calling it right now. It's, it's a result of a, a good deal of, of really good work that was done by Melissa and Larry to, uh, deal with these property owners to get them to buy into the concept. And in doing so, makes for not only a much more cost-effective construction project, but also a much better linear park, uh, and it's something that is, is very necessary for this project to move forward. So with that in mind, the plan commission has, uh, reviewed these, the CSM for the property at 4301 East Depot Road. Maybe we call it as being the former Highnight property. And what that does is it creates Lot 1, which would be retained for their private development, and Lot 3, which would be conveyed to the city for, uh, the revetment, construction of the revetment project, as well as the future part.
Okay. Um, questions, discussion? Pretty well. Okay, seeing no questions or discussions. Uh, motion on 11, please.
Marshall moves to adopt resolution number 12382-011723, approving a certified survey map submitted by Fifth Property LLC and the city of Oak Creek for the property at 4301 East Depot Road.
Go second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
And item 12 is consideration of a resolution approving certified survey map submitted by the Canal Aluminum Properties LLC and the city of Oak Creek for the properties at 9100 South Fifth Avenue and 4300 East Lake Vista Parkway. Doug?
Thank you. Very similar to the last item. This CSM, again, in working with the property owners, uh, creates actually three parcels. And it's a little bit different in that it's, uh, encompasses the, the roadway and the, um, the roadway down to and the intake plant, uh, at lake level as part of this one CSM and adjusts the property lines. So what you see as far as the exhibit, Lot 1, which is shown in the blue, would be retained and be remediated. And that's a different, a whole different story, which, you know, we could talk about for, for days, and they won't do that. Uh, but Lot, oh, Lot 1 would be retained by the city for its facilities. And what you see in yellow is, uh, what would be transferred over to the city right now. And I say that because it's very likely, in fact, that, as part of the overall solution for remediation of, of Lot 1, that additional property may be, um, transferred in some way, shape, or form to the city to form the, the basis for that park and for connectivity to Lake Vista. But this is only, what you see in yellow is the first conveyance that would allow for the revetment project to move forward.
Okay. Questions for Doug concerning? Okay, seeing none. Uh, motion?
Marshall moves to adopt resolution number 12383-011723, approving a certified survey map submitted by Canal Aluminum Properties LLC and the city of Oak Creek for the properties at 91, 9100 South Fifth Avenue and 4300 East Lake Vista Parkway.
Go second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Dukenyak.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
And next we have engineering. Uh, item 13 is consideration of a resolution accepting the workmanship of Payne and Dolan, Inc., and authorizing final contract payment under project number 22002. Matt?
Evening council, Matt Sullivan, city engineer for City of Oak Creek. Uh, before you is for the closure of the project for Apple Creek subdivision. Um, this past year it was completed. Um, the final punch list items were actually done within the last month or so, which was street or some lighting out at the park. Um, other than that, we do have some minor runovers that like to discuss if we can. Uh, most of those, actually, most of them were within three items that was undercut. Some base patching, asphaltic, and stone for shouldering. A lot of that is unforeseen. Obviously, when you start getting undercut or subgrade, and we've gone through this in the last couple of years, as we've seen this more and more frequently. Um, just poor workmanship, I would say, at the outset of the project, not on ours, but when it was originally constructed, minimal stone, things along those natures that we have to deal with. Um, and that are basically underground that you don't see until you really get the construction part of it. As far as the shouldering, that kind of came along with, um, as we continued to mill, we were seeing, you know, drop off in certain areas. So, um, that was just added to tidy it up and make it, um, more of a, kind of a finished product. Open for any questions or comments?
Anything for Matt? Okay, seeing none. Motion?
Kirkowski can make a motion to adopt resolution number 12383-011723, approving, I'm sorry, I'm one behind. Adopt resolution number 12378-011723, accepting the workmanship of Payne and Dolan, Inc., and authorizing final contract payment under project number 22002. Sorry about that.
Roll call.
Elderwoman Marshall.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
And item 14 is consideration of a resolution approving a funding agreement with MMSD for a green solution project at the Oak Creek Police Department.
Uh, Matt Sullivan, City of Oak Creek, uh, city engineer. Uh, before you, we have a resolution to adopt a funding agreement with MMSD and Green Solutions. So these funding agreements are kind of set in place prior to any project. We have to do a work plan, submit it to MMSD, um, for their approval, and then they provide us with a funding agreement. So within this funding agreement, this covers all costs. We have to front the money, and then it's fully reimbursed once we satisfy all their requirements. Some of their requirements are guaranteeing 10 years of maintenance, um, a conservation easement over that portion that we've done. And that's to conserve the work so it doesn't get changed. Um, and then also kind of a public outreach, or like whose letters or other things like that to kind of promote the green solutions type work that they're doing within the. Um, so if anybody's aware of the PD, um, kind of parking lot, it's suffering right now. It's to a point where it actually probably needs to be constructed. This is a, a good solution. It's, uh, very economical on our end. Does serve a great purpose. And we've been kind of working with Captain Stecker and Captain Anderson, or Chief, sorry, Chief, Chief Stecker and Chief Anderson prior to it for the last six years, trying to come up with solutions to find the funding and kind of fix their parking lot as it's been an issue. So this is just a good solution. At least that's how we feel at Engineering.
Questions, comments for Matt?
So, the, the failure that you're probably witnessing at Meyer is probably, as I suspect, it's the lack of maintenance and upkeep of that, that system.
It's not the stone.
It's not the stone or that. I mean, there, there is times where you do have to maintain this. And if you don't maintain these systems properly, they will fail. I mean, that's, that's the portion of it. Luckily for the one at the PD, which is where we'll be doing a porous asphalt, um, your major maintenance on it is vacuum sweeping. City has two vacuum sweepers. It would just be a routine maintenance that we would continually do there. So we have the availability and, and equipment and personnel.
Anyone else?
So, though, everything to the west, so everything from the west. So it's kind of that one that, um, kind of almost the oval. So if you do the whole oval there, prior to it going to the east behind the building, that's what we'd be taking care of at this point. We do get funding and allocated money every year in the Green Solutions. Um, so that's kind of one of the things we're kind of working right now with Chief Stecker on is future planning, um, on availability of that money. And, you know, who knows if the prices come in well? We could be looking at potentially, you know, increasing our work plan. Right, yes. So this will be a full excavation and then porous stone, underdrain, and then the asphalt. Yes, yeah. So it's gonna be like your clear stone to allow that infiltration of that water through your porous asphalt, down through the stone, cleaning it, and then out into the storm sewer, then into the system. So this is, it's much like what we have out here, but it's just gonna be porous asphalt versus the porous pavement. Just does assist in that, yes.
Uh, Ricky? Uh, name and address, please.
Uh, Rick Gabriel, 9955 South Cindy Lane, Oak Creek. I have a question about that is, um, we're working for the city. When we, I know you have heavy trucks that go back to rob the garbage on the back part of the building. And then that area, we ended up having to pour concrete and stuff like that. This is the part where the trucks come in and turn to grab the garbage, otherwise all the asphalt was just falling apart.
Yeah, what we found out during that construction, which happened this last, last year, I think in 2022 or 2021, the asphalt that was supposed to be six inches was actually only three inches in depth. So, um, the asphalt that we'll be looking at here will probably be more of like a five or six inch. But we'll be looking at the depth and we'll be looking at, you know, how those trucks come in. Um, generally speaking, most of the traffic here is just standard passenger vehicle. So there, there will be considerations.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, guys, you know, MMSD works pretty hard on these green solution projects. We're really fortunate to be a benefactor of this. Uh, as Matt said, they're really trying to, um, control stormwater and what they're processing and getting back to our lakes and rivers. So, um, this is a really good opportunity for, as Matt said, to front the cost and get it fully back. And really do the right thing, putting in porous concrete. Good work on getting the grant. Kudos to your staff on that, Matt. Ken, this, probably got some Phil Beermeister in it. Um, anything else? Okay. Uh, motion?
Marshall, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gale. Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak. Marshall.
Aye.
And item 15 is consideration of a resolution approving a funding agreement with MMSD for a green solution project at Abbotson Park. Matt?
Yes, just like the last item, um, same kind of type of funding agreement. This one is actually for Abbotson Park. As you all well aware, we went through a large project and bidding process for the pavilion, which included the parking lot. Um, the funding was actually set aside for that. Um, so we're kind of moving forward and, and doing the parking lot in a project prior to, you know, going back out and looking at the pavilion, um, as we were directed. This will go in conjunction with improving the entrance, um, which was funded under CIP this year. So, once again, this project is pretty standard, um, under the Green Solutions. And here we'll be actually using the porous pavers like we have in our parking lot out here. So it'll be a different style than the porous asphalt on the last one, but still functioning in the same manner.
Questions for Matt? Okay, seeing none. Uh, motion, please.
Kirkowski can make a motion to adopt resolution number 12380-011723, approving a funding agreement with MMSD for a green solutions project at Abbotson Park.
Ex second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
And item 16 is the license committee. I will turn that over to Alderman Kirkowski.
Thank you, Mayor. I trust everybody's had an opportunity to review the items on the common council report for tonight's meeting. Does anybody have any questions, cares, or concerns? All right. Hearing none. Kirkowski can make a motion to approve the various license requests as listed on the January 17, 2023 License Committee Report.
Roll call.
Alderman, Dukenyak.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
And item 17 is consider a motion to approve the December 27, 2022 Vendor Summary Report in the amount of $329,934.64. Of this total, $146,099.51 will affect the 2022 fiscal year with remaining $183,835.13 affecting 2023. You'd all take a moment, and if you have any questions, feel free to take the floor and ask the appropriate party. When you're satisfied there's no discussion or questions, motion?
Marshall moves to approve the December 27, 2022 Vendor Summary Report in the amount of $329,934.64. Of this total, $164,099.51 will affect the 2022 fiscal year with the remaining $183,835.13 affecting 2023.
Roll call.
Elderwoman Marshall.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
And item 18 is consideration of motion to approve the January 11, 2023 Vendor Summary Report in the amount $1,492,144.53. Of this total, $729,797.76 will affect the 2022 fiscal year with the remaining $762,346.77 affecting 2023. Uh, so once again, uh, please feel free to take the floor on any questions. Answer according. There's no discussions, questions, motion, please.
Marshall, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gale. Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
And item 19 is consider a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, section 19.85, to discuss the following. Section 19.85, sub 1, sub C, to discuss the performance evaluation for the city administrator. B, section 19.85, sub 1, sub E, consider an amendment to the TID number 11 Finance Development Agreement and Phase 3 Agreement for Emerald Row Phase 1. Second Agreement to the TID number 11 Finance Development Agreement Phase 3. Agreement for Emerald Row Phase 2 and 3, and TID number 11 Finance Development Agreement for Emerald Row Phase 3, Parcels A and C. President Gale?
Come here. We'll move to convene and to close session. Five, sub one, sub C. Amendment to TID number eleven.
We have a second.
Kirkowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak. Marshall.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
We'll now convene and to close session and resume at its conclusion. Thank you. We will now reconvene and to open session. President Gale.
Kirkowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak. Marshall. Gale. Kirkowski.
Aye.
Okay, uh, item twenty-one, uh, any motion that'll lead to an action?
Marshall, second.
Roll call.
Elder woman, Marshall.
Aye.
Gale. Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Excellent, and, uh, before we get to adjournment, Steve, you wanted to say a few words?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanna, uh, on behalf of the, the city, the council, uh, just express our condolences to the family of Brian Stromowski from Stromowski Heating. He passed away January fourth and, uh.
Branded?
Branded, yeah, from cancer, so, you know, his company's been, you know, you see the trucks all over town, and he's been a longstanding, uh, business here in Oak Creek, and, uh, so we just wanted to express our condolences to the family.
Certainly.
Yeah, I met Brian, uh, years ago, again, with Little League, and, uh, just a wonderful guy to deal with. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, um, with that, adjournment, please.
Marshall will move to adjourn.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Okay, we stand adjourned, good night, everybody, have a great week.